All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, regular meeting, Monday, November 2nd, 2015, General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition. If we could please have a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Monday?
Mr. Harville. Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Yeah.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Boggsdale?
Present.
Mr. Hagerman?
Here.
Ms. Bowman?
Here. Would you please stand and let us recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Can you hear me okay? We're moving on now to our hearing of citizens. Welcome everybody here tonight. Always look forward to hearing from our citizens. The first person who has signed up to speak is Richard C. Shields. And I remind you, when you come up, please take the mic off and hold it in your hand because we are being recorded now and it picks up better that way, and give us your name and the district you reside. If you will take it off the stand.
I got a big mouth, I believe I can hear all right.
Okay.
I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow is Election Day and use your right to vote and get out and vote, please. My name is Richard C. Shields of the Callens-Gretner District. Good evening to each of you. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank each of you Board of Supervisors for your service to our county. I would like, at this time, to ask that each of you supervisors would work together because a united supervisors would be strong, but a divided Board of Supervisors would fail. I was appointed to the Pennsylvania County Road Viewers Committee back in August, but before that, I got a petition for a flashing solar-powered caution sign to be put somewhere at the end of 41, at the intersection of 41 and Route 57. Since then, I haven't heard anything about it. On October 24th, when they had the Callens Festival, I spoke to Jerry Hagerman about it, and he told me that it was gonna cost $20,000. Well, a few days later, I was at a place where I could receive cell phone service, and I looked it up myself. The cost of a flashing light, or caution sign, it's a 30 by 30 sign, was $2,600. Why would it cost $17,400 to install it? You don't need four or five trucks, five or six people to put up a sign. If you would give me the specs of where to put the sign, I would be glad to put it up for free. But someone said it has to be a certified personnel. Well, they would do the same thing. They would get a location, dig a hole, plant a post, and bolt a sign on it. That's not very difficult. But anyway, my point is safety. It was not many days after the Callens Festival that there was another accident right there, and that three people got taken to the hospital. Two of them had to be airlifted out. You know, why do we have to wait till someone dies before you do anything about it? They have at least one accident right there a month, sometimes more than that, you know? A life, a human life is worth well more than $20,000 if you're gonna spend that much for it. But I think it needs to be done. And back to my appointment for the Pennsylvania County Road Viewers Committee, I just want to know, if I'm on a committee, do I get to be part of the committee and attend meetings? If I do, could you tell me where and when that that might be? My last statement would be to please remember our men and women that has served in the military, both serving now or in the past. Even though we celebrate this on November 11th next week, we should remember each and every one, every day, for the sacrifice they have made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. We normally don't enter into a dialogue with the citizens when they're speaking, but I will tell you, you picked a good night to be here tonight because we have V-DOT representatives here, and they're hearing what you said. And as far as the Road Viewers Committee, we'll have your supervisor let you know, I don't think they've met in a while, so you have a... Okay. But Mr. Hagman will be in touch with you. All right, thank you. Next speaker is Gerald Milliman.
I'm Gerald Milliman, out of Gretna, Virginia. I just wanted to pray for the board again tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Milliman. This bower has, "Father, how we thank you that you loved us so much, you gave your son to die on a cross for me. And Father, tonight we think of these servicemen who have given their life and given their all, and we might be set free here on this land. Most of all, Father, for your son who gave his life on a cross, for the forgiveness of our sin. Father, it seems to me that our country has turned its back on you. I know this is a period when the devil does have control over this whole world. One day, each and every one of us has got to stand before a holy God, and we're gonna be asked, 'What did you do with my son, Jesus Christ? Did you believe?'" We've got to face that fact. I think it's about time that we let prayer back into our schools, let a coach bow before and with his team to pray on a football field without getting fired from his job. If the name of Jesus is so oppressive to us, and so offensive to us, I pray that one day Jesus Christ will have mercy on those who decide that they don't need Jesus anymore, they don't need the Bible even in our courtrooms. Just have to say, "I am the one who will tell the truth," without even considering the Holy Bible. We ask you to guide and direct in these board meetings, each and every month. And tonight, we especially think of those who are running for office. Why they would want this office, I'll never know. But Father, we just pray for them, pray for their families, guide and direct in their lives. They have an awesome job to do, whether it's with putting up a sign, as this gentleman said. It costs money, I realize that. But Father, if it saves a life, maybe we should be taking attention. But most of all, Father, each person's life, each person's soul right here tonight is important to God. So guide and direct in our lives tonight, in Jesus' masculine name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Milliman. The next speaker is Becky Yates. And the Yates family.
Hello, my name is Becky Yates, and my family and I reside in the Chatham-Blairs District in Doubletree. I am here to support the Children at Play Sign Program, and hope the board will support it as well. Our neighborhood has agreed to support a cost share for this program. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all we have, signed up to speak. Anyone else? Thank you again for being here tonight. We move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion in the consent agenda, item 5, A, B, C, D, to approve.
Have a second.
Take a second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and pull out two items that are on the consent agenda. We have a couple of presentations. So first, we are going to recognize a couple of folks that are here tonight with a resolution, item C. I would like to ask Mr. MacDoss and the family of Frances Hurt to please come forward, and the board members will come down as well.
Thank you. As well as many, many other accomplishments that they both have made. So I'm gonna read the first one to MacDoss. At the regular meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, held on Monday, November 2nd, 2015, the following resolution was presented and adopted in appreciation of the efforts of James MacDoss, co-founder and chairman of the Callens Fall Festival. Whereas, James MacDoss is a longtime resident of Pennsylvania County with extensive knowledge of 18th century history and life ways, and whereas, MacDoss teamed with Frances Hurt to provide historical-related educational programs for local schoolchildren at the Callens Courthouse. And following one of these programs in 1979, Mr. Doss and Mrs. Hurt proposed an annual fair on the grounds to make Pennsylvanians more aware of their county's abundant and colorful history. And whereas, on the first Saturday in October 1980, the First Annual Callens Fall Festival, often called the Autumn Poupée, was held. And whereas, the First Callens Fall Festival had three to five vendors and approximately 200 attendees. Thirty-five years later, this festival boasts over 75 vendors and attracts thousands of attendees. Attendees witnessed area citizens engaging in parlor crafts such as black smoothing, rug hooking, spinning, basket weaving, making apple butter, cider, and many other events. And whereas, in 2000, at the request of then 5th District Congressman Virgil H. Goode, Jr., the Callens Fall Festival was submitted for inclusion to the Local Legacies Project, and won national acclaim by being named a local legacy by the Library of Congress for the excellent manner in which it has portrayed American culture and historical heritage. And whereas, October 24th, 2015, marks the 35th anniversary of the Callens Fall Festival, which draws thousands to Pennsylvania County and has become the principal fundraiser for the Pennsylvania County Historical Society. Whereas, James MacDoss has been the chairman of the Callens Fall Festival Committee and has been its principal organizer since 1980. Then now therefore be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby express their deepest appreciation and gratitude to James MacDoss for the superb manner and faithfulness by which he has directed the organization of the Callens Fall Festival, which exposes thousands to the beauty of Pennsylvania County and its historically rich culture. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to James MacDoss, given under my hand the second day of November 2015. Brenda Bowman, Chair, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors; Clarence Monday, Clerk, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. All right.
Your family members, you guys, that's where they... That's one of them. They want to come up here too, because I want you to be here when he gets this, and then we'll do the next one, and then we'll all have good pictures. Yeah, sure. That'd be fantastic.
She won that one.
Turn around. We're gonna turn around. Well, we'll do that just a second, and I want you to attention. Now we're gonna turn around, and the photographer's gonna use the camera. All right, now we're all turning around.
Okay, are we ready? This one, I'll get this one first. Got it done.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna turn around this way. And she's...
Get the rest of the supervisor, come on around.
And people will work away around.
Come on, Mark.
Okay. Yeah, everybody make sure you see me. Make sure you see me, so you'll be in the picture. Smile. All right, look forward. Count to three. One, two, three. We'll take a couple, hold on. And another one. And one more. One, two, three. That's great. Do another one. If you would like to say it, please, Mr. Doss.
Well, I appreciate this very much. I accept this with gratitude, Mrs. Hurt. With effortless support, and mentoring, and encouraging, this would have... Never happened. She was always concerned about not only me and my family, but the festival. Even when she was near death, she asked me about the future. And I had to promise her that it would continue, and I accept this. And it worked. I'll tell you this, in the back of the train... My mother, yes, I know, knew her, she was never lost her words. And if she were here, she would be finishing herself. And she would be making it clear. And you're the man. You're the man. May help us. And she, of course, regarded you as one of the best friends that she ever had. And it's absolutely amazing what you all made happen. When she was here, she would say, "Why didn't you make that?" And I would say, "It was her." And that's why you all have...
And we only... I'll have to share this. The only thing we ever disagreed on about the festival was what to call it. It was early stages, I wanted to call it Autumn Poupée. She told me we could not name it a poupée, because that was a French word, and there was nothing that counts. There was French. She said it would have to be called just the Callens Festival. Neither one of us gave an inch. Even when she wrote, two years ago, she called it the Callens Festival. When I sent it in, I called it Autumn Poupée. So we finally agreed that we would both have our way and call it Autumn Poupée slash Callens Festival. So this would make her very happy.
All right, and we're gonna do one. And Mrs. Hurt, we have the family members here tonight.
At the regular meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, held on Monday, November 2nd, 2015, the following resolution was presented and adopted in appreciation of the outstanding civic service of Frances Hallam Hurt. Whereas, Frances Hallam Hurt was a longtime resident of Pennsylvania County and a distinguished local historian. And whereas, Frances Hallam Hurt wrote three historical dramas based on Pennsylvania County history and co-wrote a book on 18th century landmarks in Pennsylvania County. Whereas, Frances Hallam Hurt played a major role in the restoration of 18th century historic sites in Pennsylvania County, including Yates Tavern and the Callens Courthouse, and was instrumental in acquiring and restoring the 1918 Southern Railway Depot in Chatham. And whereas, Frances Hallam Hurt led celebrations, including the county's 1967 Bicentennial, 1976 National Bicentennial, and Christmas in Colonial Chatham. And whereas, in 1979, Frances Hallam Hurt was long time, with longtime friend James MacDoss, created and co-founded the Callens Fall Festival, also known as the Autumn Poupée. And the first festival was held on the first Saturday in October of 1980. October 24th, 2015, marks the 35th anniversary of the Callens Fall Festival, which draws thousands to Pennsylvania County and has become the principal fundraiser for the Pennsylvania County Historical Society. And whereas, Frances Hallam Hurt created the Pennsylvania County Literacy Program and led the effort to start the county's library system. Whereas, though not a native of Pennsylvania County, Frances Hallam Hurt expressed through her numerous activities and efforts, brought culture and beautification to her adopted county of Pennsylvania and to the town of Chatham. Whereas, with the passing of Frances Hallam Hurt on February 6th, 2015, Pennsylvania County lost a shining star, whose extensive activities have benefited the lives of thousands of local residents and visitors, and the efforts of Mrs. Hurt's efforts will benefit generations to come. Then now therefore be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby express their deepest appreciation and gratitude for the service, dedication, and love Frances Hallam Hurt provided for Pennsylvania County. Mrs. Hurt's accomplishments, civic spirit, and philanthropism were invaluable gifts to the citizens of Pennsylvania County. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to the family of Frances Hallam Hurt, given under my hand the second day of November 2015. Brenda Bowman, Chair, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors; Clarence Monday, Clerk, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you so much. This would mean so, so much to my mother. I have, and I think she would be very quick to point out that, that really, all she, she was a cheerleader, is what I think she saw herself as. And with, since she died this year, I've been going through the papers, and she wrote all, every letter to diaries, everything. And the thing that we keep coming back to is her gratitude to the county. And of course, she came here from Texas and New York, but she loved this county, and she loved the way people responded to her big ideas. And I don't know if I'm mad, but I'll tell you the way I got along with her, if you ever hear second this, it's my whole heart. Why are you going along with her? Say, "Yes, ma'am." And I learned so far, you could say, "Yes, ma'am," wouldn't be so smooth. But I'm not sure that, I don't know how many of you all really knew my mother. I know Mr. Blackstock did, Mr. Hagman did. I'm not sure you did, Mr. Boggsdale. You did. And you all, the whole family did. But you know, the one that I would like to, the first, anybody here remember Flornore Cates? Well, Mr. Cates was a great friend of my mother's. And we moved back here in 1979, New York, my mother had never approved of the fact that I smoked cigars, but she saw an opportunity, because Mr. Cates smoked cigars. And I always had to have a cigar available for her to give Mr. Cates, because she had many projects that needed for Board Supervisors, blessings. But the, the one, I think the person she was closest to, standing up here, is that rascal right there? Cory Harvick. The rascal on the right, it's him. And it goes, it's really small things, I hope I'm not taking too much of that. Way back when the Callens Festival first started, and I'm not sure Cory was even on the Board Supervisors, but he was when it started. But mother was up at the Callens Festival, wandering around in that huge dress that she always wore. And she ran into this nice fellow, this rascal Cory Harvick. And they got to chatting, both of them being pretty amiable, friendly sorts. And my mother said, "You know, I'm just dying to go buy a fried pie, but I don't have any money." Look at what she had on this costume. And Mr. Harvick said, "Well, let's go get you a fried pie." And that was the beginning of a long friendship. And she told another story about Mr. Harvick, about the times she couldn't find her car, and that same nice man who had gotten her the fried pie, came forward and said, "Well, Miss Hurt, you just get my car, we'll go find your car in this huge parking lot." And then there's one thing, though, that I don't think Cory knows about, that she always told when she would talk about this car, and that is, that she called him one day on the phone, and he answered, and they exchanged pleasantries. And she must have said, "Well, what are you up to these days?" And he said, "Well, Miss Hurt, I'll tell you what I can do right now. I gotta go to Richmond this afternoon, and I'm ironing my white shirt." And that, to my mother, was the clearest sign of a good man. But anyway, she would be so, and she would be so pleased that a lady was meeting with the Board Supervisors, and she was larger than all the spirits that you promote. And, but anyway, I can't thank you all enough for this. And my son Robert was hoping to be here tonight. Catch up one more. My mother loved politics. And she would just be, she'd be calling the shots tonight. She'd be making her list of who's gonna win in his life. And she'd just walk, and she was very independent. And I can remember as a little boy, that she, she was a strong Adelaide Stevenson supporter. Everybody around here was for Isabelle. My mother might have campaigned for Adelaide Stevenson, but anyway, the, nothing thrilled her more than when our son, Robert, got into politics, because, I mean, she had a horse in the race there. And toward the end of her life, when she couldn't drive anymore, the way that people stayed with her, she would, she met somebody that could drive her and take her when she needed to go. And they went for life, well, the campaign. And what campaigning meant was riding through the countryside, and my mother would sit there, and she'd let one lady drive, and one lady in the back, and my mother would say, "Well, look at that, isn't that a pretty yard right there? Let's put on a pop of hortons." She had no idea who was there. And we did have a few, a few returns, but nothing that could have more than this. Thank you so much.
Now we're gonna turn around. Turn around. Y'all come in, or Mr. Hayton, come on in. Mr. Sneed, y'all ready? Ten, three, one.
Susan appointed Judge.
I know, I feel like Judge Hunter. All right, I'm trying to get the glare off. Ready, one, two, three. I wanna do a couple. Another one. One more. Smile. Thank you.
I don't think I need a mic. If you can't hear me, you need to come closer. At this time, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I think we all share in this alike. Every comment's been made before this and tonight, we all share this. At this time, I'd like to have Jake Wright and Ken Martin come up.
Y'all come in all with Mr. Hayton, come on in. Mr. Snee, y'all ready? And three, one.
Susan appointed Judge.
I know, I feel like Judge, I'm trying to get the glare off, ready, one, two, three. I want to do a couple, another one. One, one. Smile. Thank you.
If you can't hear me, you need to come closer. At this time, on behalf of the board of supervisors, I think we all share in this alike, every, every comment's been made before this and tonight, we all share this. At this time, I'd like to have Jay Crowder, Kenneth Martin come up, and also Mr. Christopher Winston. Mr. Winston is the district manager of the Lynchburg, the VDOT system which we under in Pennsylvania County, who's the, they call it the district administrator, is that right, Winston? District engineer.
Oh, the engineer, now, you need to change your card.
Yes, sir. But anyway, it gives me a great pleasure, knowing these gentlemen over the years and the work and dedication that they've done, and, and I can echo this with the other board members that can make comments, but anytime I say anything about Mr. Crowder or Mr. Martin, they said, I'm, I'm for that, I'm for that, and said, you're right. And I know some of you may not recognize these gentlemen, but what happened years ago when, when Virginia Department of Transportation, they kind of reorganized throughout the Commonwealth? And we had a resident engineer that was out here in Chatham, and at the time, they, they came up with a plan to eliminate the one in Chatham, and I was the one that went to Salem to protest that, said, we need one. Well, make a long story short, the resident engineer that we had was Mr. Kenneth Martin, and working with Jay Crowder. And we didn't think, we said, we won't have anybody working with us and helping us with our rate. Well, I got, I got fooled. I was totally wrong. And these two gentlemen has diligent, they've worked with the board of supervisors, and even them more, when you go out with our constituents and talk to the people that has problems, they are apprised at talking to them in their mannerism and how they treat the citizens out here. And it's just astonishing. I've, I've witnessed it myself, and I've been quite amazed. But I know that we want to get on tonight, so the first one here, the award of appreciation presented to Joseph A. Crowder, in appreciation for your hard work and dedication to the citizens of Pennsylvania County from the board of supervisors, November the second, twenty fifteen. And that's for this award of appreciation presented to Kenneth S. Martin, in appreciation for your hard work and dedication to the citizens of Pennsylvania County from the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. And you notice what, to the citizens of Pennsylvania County, I mean, I think that speaks what's happening. Back to comments, and then the board members would like to, back to comment.
Just thank you, it's certainly been an honor working with you all and serving the citizens of the county, and I just want to thank each and every one of you as well for all that you do to improve the safety of the highway system. I know a lot of the requests y'all put in, you really are doing your best to make sure that the citizens have the best roadway possible, and really appreciate it as a citizen of Pennsylvania County myself, and thank all of y'all.
I'd just like to say thank you so much for allowing me to come over here and, and work with you guys. I really appreciate it, and I enjoy working in this county. Every county does things a little bit differently. When I, when I came over here from Halifax, it was a totally different way of working, but I, I really love the way you guys get there, you get to work with the citizens and I, I really appreciate the effort that you all put into it. I don't think the average citizen has any idea of the amount of effort and work that you guys put into it. So, I really appreciate that, and I'm very thankful for the board working with me. I'm gonna miss people that are going off the board. I know I'll, I'll get to know the new members that come over to the board, and I'll look forward to working with them as well. But thank y'all very much, I really appreciate it.
Excuse me, I tell you, I just, very brief, we have great people. You know, Jay, Kenneth, I think their dedication, it, it just, it shines, it's forty-four seven, whether it's sunny or snowing, they care, they're about results, and I'm really very proud of them. And also, though, it takes teamwork, and it's very clear to me that you got to do thank the board here, and very much appreciate that commitment, as well as Mr. Monday, as our county administrator, just really appreciate that. Set the bar high, and it's an honor to, to be with you, thank you.
Alton, you, y'all want to come down to the line with a comment?
I don't want to keep Jay out too long, he's in my district, I'll be voting. I think I do.
I just want to thank Mr. Martin, Mr. Crowder, for all, everything that you've done. I just have to go with seventy-seven minutes, thank you.
Well, you know, I'm really hoping to, for the people here in the audience, we've all worked so hard and did, and many times we, all of us, we should, we lived at a certain place, perhaps at a certain time, but she seemed like her, her bruises smiling, and they've been a great, a great team to work with, that I've got now, and I'm proud to know of.
I just want to say thank you too, because we've had a few problems, we actually have a couple still pending, you heard about one tonight, so we'll, we'll just talk about that.
Just like to congratulate these guys, like Cory said, when we first went this round, I was concerned that we had great, and not only does I consider him fit to work with him, I consider him friends. Tell a story real quick, I call Kenneth all the time, say, what are you doing, I'm on vacation, but he'll answer his phone, and I say, I'll let you go, he said, what do you need? I mean, that just goes above and beyond, why might I like it, but I appreciate it.
I want to thank Kenneth and Jay, I know I've called you on vacation several times.
I must take a lot of it.
Chris taking his in, I swear.
You would answer me, and you'd have Jay call you, you got you on vacation, but you're always answering calls, and you've always been able to explain everything to me, and just very easy to work with, and I said, I need to be with you, if I can't tell you a phone, I gotta show you this. And you'd say, okay, let me know, you're there, I do appreciate it.
All right, over to you.
They're by the, back there. I'm just bowing them back out. Okay, great. Everybody smile. Count to three, one, two, three. We get another one. And last one, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I'm here for today. Appreciate it.
Chris, have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Mr. Hurt and Mr. Doss, I have these that I'd like for you, Mr. Monday, please, Mr. Hurt, and Mr. Doss. Okay. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. Item six, Ride Solutions Program Grant, Mr. Monday.
Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the board, good evening. At your last meeting, you considered as a pass-through of fiscal agent for the Workforce Investment Board, a fifty thousand dollar grant. That matter was tabled. You requested Lisa Foltz, the executive director, to come before you and provide additional information and to answer any questions. Ms. Foltz cannot be with us this evening, but we have Philip Winkstern, who works with the WIB. He is here to answer any questions and provide information to you. If you decide to accept this grant, there's already been, well, you would need a motion and a second and a recorded vote to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. And now, I believe a couple of you had questions, and so, we'll start with whoever had the first one, Mr. Harville.
Question I had, I guess you're familiar, the proposed DRPT grant, it had on here staff business service salary and fringe benefits for staff and business service time and activities associated with the grant, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and one dollars. Could you, with your present staff, not have to hire somebody and take that money and use it for the citizens that were in need to help?
Well, we're, we're not hiring any new positions. The Workforce Investment Board actually contracts with local chambers of commerce to deliver business services within each of their localities. The person, the individual that holds that contract, or the entity that holds that contract in Pennsylvania County is the Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce, but since these activities were not included in the request for proposal that we sent out and they bid on, we can't ask them to do new duties without rewarding them. And the primary activities of this grant require staff time.
How could we go about getting some of this changed? Through our legislators or what? You know, I, I just...
What specifically would you like to see changed?
Well, the, the staff, business services salaries, and the fringe benefits here, he's talking about, you couldn't take your present staff...
Right.
And, and use them, I mean...
We would probably need to hire more staff, otherwise.
Well, I, I hate what you're saying.
Right.
I, I don't buy that, but, and then if the marketing setup, that's a lot of money to set up the marketing. I mean, I would think of an organization, and I'm familiar with, you know, the WPW, I mean, if you already have a nice staff and a lot of good dedicated people, and I, I don't see why you couldn't take this fifty thousand dollars and use it for the citizens out here in our communities, better, and distribute it for all of these market setups and direct, and the salaries and fringes and everything.
Well, the primary act, the primary activities of the grant are to send staff directly to the businesses where you identify transportation challenges, try and hold fairs to advertise these events, and have them register for the program using the database. The database matches individuals looking for a carpool with one another, enabling them to commute to work where they might not have been able to previously. So it has the benefit of helping a rider or a business that is looking for new employees, and I've identified some new employees, but they cannot, they don't have reliable transportation to get to work.
Well, I mean, if, I know, because I've been, I've been involved with some of these grants, that they get on transportation, I mean, this is, this happens all the time. I mean, they've been beaten on the same team for years on transportation and getting the people where they need to go.
Right, this grant is not intended to make investments into public infrastructure or anything like that. That, that's not the Department of Public Transportation's intention with the grant program.
Really what we need to strive is power up what directly...
That, that's what I would think. This is more of a, because, you know, most, most transportation, you know, related projects, they're pretty expensive.
Yeah, I appreciate your honesty, thank you, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Harville, Mr. Barksdale.
Just, Mr. Harville was asking the very same thing, and he, he demonstrated my concern, and I guess I was trying to figure another way to say it, but I guess for me, it's, it's fifty thousand dollars, the grant is fifty thousand dollars. Why can't we use every penny of the fifty thousand dollars to provide services? No fringe benefits, no salaries, no hiring any of these people or anything, so that's...
The services for this grant are trying to encourage people to register for the program, so the services that are funded under this are to pay for individuals to go out to businesses and try and encourage individuals to sign up for this program and this service.
The last thing I'll say, just, when I look at it, it's just something is not right, that we're trying to do good, and that's a good thing, but we're, we end up, that we, but there's a shortcoming for the desired outcome. When you look at the amount of money, the twenty-seven thousand that would go for the help, so to speak, and anyway, I, I appreciate your...
We've already had some successes. We've only launched with one business in Patrick County, and in just in that one soft launch event, we had forty-three individuals register for the service. Those are forty-three individuals that did not have reliable transportation to get to work, or were looking to make their commute cheaper, so we think that we're already starting to have an impact.
I'm still, I'm not, I, I can't express what, I, I really don't know how else to express it.
It's a, it's a service that's in, in place in the New River Valley Planning District, Roanoke Valley Planning District, the Region Two Thousand Planning District, and all of their budgets are structured the same and have been for years.
Madam, Madam Chair, I, Mr. Barksdale, you, you will, you will, you'll be here next year, I just like, I won't do it, I, I would respectfully ask you to ask this gentleman to report the results of this fifty thousand dollars back to the board with you. That's what I'd like to see happen.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Can I get Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock.
I think you've touched on it, but just briefly, tell us, give us a brief summary of what this program is about, and what, and what your goals are.
Well, the primary purpose of the program is to work with employers that are having transportation difficulties. Some of these difficulties could be in terms of hiring employees that can reliably get to work, or the burden of traveling or commuting to work is eating up too much of their paycheck. So you try and make it either more affordable or give them the opportunity to access reliable transportation. That's the most common purpose. Depending on the employer, we have a number of different services through our menu. These can include putting together van, van shares through Enterprise, which subsidize seats at an affordable rate, so that if no one in that group has access to a reliable vehicle, they can rent a van, the seat costs are subsidized through a separate grant, and they run their own van pool to get to work. Some employers might have difficulties with, or parking shortages if they're looking to expand, so as opposed to having them repave or new facility, ground on their facilities or acquire new land, we can work to try and get more employees carpooling, incentivize the carpools, so they can, one, not have to get those, the new facilities paved or whatever, but they also have employees that are traveling to work more reliably.
Okay, well, that makes sense. The database that you refer to, is it an existing database?
Yes, it is.
Or do you build the database as you go?
The, the database is existing, it's on ridesolutions.org, which is a website. When we do our outreach to businesses, we can either register individuals on a computer or they can fill out a sheet that is then input into the system. This removes any liability on the part of employers. They enter the times they're looking to commute, where they're looking to commute from and their final destination, and then provides a match list directly to the individual based on their preferences, and it's up to that individual to make the connection with the other individuals that are entered into the database.
Is this particular grant targeted towards us because we don't have a lot of public transportation available?
I think it would help our region more because we don't have a lot of public transportation available. In other regions, they do different things with their grant. In Roanoke, for instance, their transportation mapping will include a little bit more public transportation services, so if an individual is trying to get from point A to point B, but there's a bus with a bike rack and a bike rack, it'll give them the opportunity for public transportation before they get to a park and ride location, for instance, and then connect them with another commute.
Thank you.
Mr. Snee.
Does the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission, they're the one that decides how this is broken out, and who decides it?
The Roanoke Valley Appalachian Regional Commission is actually the grant recipient. They subaward the grant to the Workforce Investment Board for our region because the local planning district commission did not feel they had capacity for the grant. I think they identified our business services team as an excellent way to market the program to employers within the region, so it seemed like a natural fit for them, since we already had our foot in the door.
I don't remember hearing this through the West Piedmont Planning District.
They approached us last December, Leah Manning did.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make one more comment.
Are you through, Mr. Snee?
Say that again, the West Piedmont.
Leah Manning approached us last December with this opportunity.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snee.
Just one last, so, looking at the breakdown of the proposed grant, the ARVARC shows seven thousand four seventy-seven, so would you agree that that is the amount that will, without a doubt, be used for services?
That is, that is the amount that's not coming back to our region to fund business services directly for outreach. Those are for ARVARC staff who maintain the database in Roanoke, and one of their staff members that's also been helping us launch the program in our region since he has five years' experience operating the program.
So, what is the dollar amount that, what is the... So what is the dollar amount that, what is the total amount that will be paid so that people can be benef, benefit from the ride share? Do you know what that figure is?
I'm not sure what you mean by paid.
Well, I'm trying to-
Like the individual, our individual staff?
What is going to go actually to pay for the ride share?
Well, the ride share itself is free for individuals. The database matches people into a carpool. It doesn't necessarily pay people to participate in the carpool. However, with the outreach budget, we can pull money out for incentives to encourage individuals to participate in the carpool. So hypothetically, say you start carpooling and you carpool for the first week, you could be entered into a drawing to receive a gas card with other individuals that have participated in a carpool at your employer.
Basically, what we're doing is staffing, creating a staff position for somebody to coordinate these activities.
Correct. Well, multiple staff positions. There's going to be a certain percentage of several individuals' time.
Fifty thousand dollars worth?
Well, nineteen thousand five hundred plus benefits.
If I could say, but in the end, you're providing a service that benefits-
That's correct.
-businesses and the workers.
We've already been approached by Anthorn International to try and bring this program to them. So there, there is an interest on the part of employers with this program.
So you're providing a service to businesses and individuals. The, the grant is just for staff to, to set it up and do the marketing and, and the research and what have you-
That's correct.
-and then identify those that need the service, and then the service is provided.
That's correct.
So it's a win for businesses and workers.
At no cost to the region.
I have one last statement, and that's, you know, when you said, you know, some of them get these gas cards, this, this, this could get very political with people and a way of getting a gas card. Yeah, I'll pick them up and I'll take them because, you know, I get a gas card. I have nothing in my life seen this country get in such a pickle.
That's, the goal is to change behaviors and attitudes and educate them about the service. That's why most of the things, why most of the funding is going to staffing to do it at the employer's location.
Before Mr. Hagerman speaks, there is a hum. Are y'all hearing that? There is a, a hum going on. I don't know where it's coming from. Something, I guess, with the sound system.
I do, I do hear it also. But the only question I have, where is Anthorn International? Is that the only company in, in the area in Pennsylvania County that's applied for this grant?
They're not applicants. That's the first person, that's the first company we've had conversations with. My understanding is that the business services representative with Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce is currently working to identify other businesses that could benefit from the program.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for coming here tonight.
Thank you.
So with that, we need a, we need a motion and then a roll call on this, right, Mr. Monday?
Yes, ma'am. It will be to approve and appropriate a total of forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars as set forth in the attached budget document. Motion second, discussion, recorded vote. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the board supervisors approve and appropriate a total of forty-two thousand five twenty-two as set forth in the attached budget documents.
And the motion, second. Mr. Barksdale, any other discussion?
Just, just briefly, the, the total amount of the grant's fifty thousand. Why are we only doing forty-two two fifty-five?
That would be the amount of funds that would be actually passing through-
Right.
-that has not already been appropriated.
That's correct. That's the, the rest of that is going directly to ARVARC on the front end of the grant for their portion.
So you backing up the seventy-four seventy-two?
All right. Roll call, Mr. Monday?
Mr. Harville?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Sneed?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes. Thank you, and again, thank you for being here with us tonight. Item seven, change order number one, Medical Center Road in Callahan Hill, Combacker Sykes Project. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. At the last meeting, there was a motion and a second to appropriate fifty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-four cents from the unassigned fund balance for change order number one from concrete foundations for work at the county compactor sites. Ten-day layover has been met, and Madam Chair, Mr. Hawker is here. If you have any questions about this appropriation, it would need a recorded vote to finish this process up if it be the board's desire.
All right. We had a motion, and it can be discussed at this time if anybody has any questions. Mr. Hawker? Mr. Harville?
Madam Chair, I just like, I think something's wrong here. This whole page, it was the last board meeting and this one, and I highlighted it, didn't bring it up, but just for the record, I think we need to have it says, change order number one in the amount of fifty-four thousand two sixty-six seventy-six. It said removal, remove additional existing pavement at the entrance to the Medical Center Road site to remove this deep slope toward the wall, uh, wall here. I think that should be Callahan Hill.
No, you got the Medical Center as well as Callahan Hill. You got some problem with the Medical Center.
With the slope?
Yeah, just at the road. That was a small problem, not like-
Mr. Hawker, would you?
Yeah. But we had, we, both of them was messed up.
Yeah, but the-
Callahan Hill and Medical Center.
But, but the one that, that Medical Center Road was, were tied into a V dot. It had concrete that had to be changed. The slope on it had to be changed to make grade.
Thank you, Mr. Harville. Good to answer that.
Any other questions for Mr. Hawker while he's there?
I don't, I don't want to, want to appear I'm trying to give someone a hard time, but I want to know, is this, is this a mistake that we made or is this a mistake that Duver and Davis made?
First, let me say I'm responsible for everything because I'm over operations. I don't have a problem with that. Basically, what you got at the two sites, you had two misses. You can call it any way you want to. I'll take my responsibility. At the, at the Sandy River Medical Center, our trucks are forty-two foot long. That's a solid waste truck, forty-two foot long. At the far end, where you go around to service the boxes where the citizens normally don't go, they did not calculate the radius for the truck to make the turn. That caused us to have to extend that site out, bring in compacted material, and add on about twelve thousand dollars plus the, or problem must, must Harville outline. That was an actual miss by not calculating the radius of the truck. When you go back to the Callahan's Hill site, it's a tough site. It was solid rock. There's no question about that. We had several issues with that site. You've got roughly a ten percent grade with the roll-off truck, and if anybody's familiar with tractor-trailer trucks, lowboys, or even solid waste trucks, if they're empty, you can get them stuck in the grass. They look like great big strong trucks. You go out across a yard with a lowboy with no machinery on it, you can get it stuck in the high grass. But when you take a solid waste truck, especially when it's empty, and try to back up a ten percent grade at a dead stop, it spins on you. There's no question about it. If your gravels are completely dry, you can get a little more traction in wet than you can actual dry gravels, but when the, when the gravels are completely dry, you're going to spend every time. And that's what, what happened there. The miss on that is it should have been pavement or concrete from the get-go. That was the miss.
Thank you, Mr. Harville.
Okay.
Mr. Hagerman?
Mr. Hawker, I've just discussed this time after time. I, I guess one of, one of the problems that, is, is there any way that we can avoid making these, these mistakes? I noticed that there'd been an extra ten thousand dollars listed as, I guess, in case there was another mistake or something maybe.
Let, let me answer that this way, Mr. Hagman. Change orders in construction, just like this facility that we're sitting in tonight, I've done the project management on this, and we had a few change orders. Some of them was oriented by the judges or changes, but very few. Change orders can be your friend. Since I've been here for twenty-nine years, I've signed a lot of change orders that cut hundreds of thousands of dollars off of projects. But you also, in construction, you're going to run into unknown things. You're going to dig into solid rock. You're going to dig up things that you did not know was under the ground. You're going to go into swamps. At the Broswell Park, we actually dug up underground well. Well, it cost quite a bit. We had to go in and we had to cap it. So for me to tell you that there's a way to catch all change orders in the construction industry, it's impossible. You should always try to catch the best you can and minimize them. That way you control your budget. But you are going to run into good change orders as well as bad ones. Some change orders, the owner, in this particular case, the owner's the board of supervisors. You may very well come by and say, well, you put this wall up. I've decided, or we've decided, we want another one over here. Well, that's a change order that's initiated by the owner, the person that's paying for it. And certainly, if the person that's paying the bill wants to change something, they should have the opportunity. With the AIA contract documents, and that's basically what's used in Virginia, you need a mechanism set up where owner can change something, a contractor can, can question it, and then you go through a process to determine if the owner is willing to pay for it or whatever. So it's just a mechanism, a change order is a mechanism to get to the end of what you, what you're trying to do, whether it's either to cut it or add to it or fix changes that has happened along your way. This courthouse had a few changes, but very few when we built it. New construction, unless in its unsuitable ground, undercut material you did not know about, there should be very few change orders if it's totally new construction. When you're doing renovations, you always subject it to the unknown. So there will probably always be change orders. It's just how you manage them and how, how well you set your project up at the beginning to control your budget.
Just one other, one other question. How many more complimentary sites can we have to, other workups?
Roughly nineteen eighty-eight, when, uh, working with Solid Waste Committee, Mr. Harville and several other people, when I first looked at the system back then at that time, I projected that we would need, with the total consolidation that was going to take twenty-some years to do, we're now twenty-five years into it. Cost millions of dollars over twenty-five years. I projected we was going to have to have to completely provide services to the county, twenty-five sites. We are real close to the twenty-first site, and I still say, whether I'm here or not, by, by the time you reach the rural areas of the county and get a balanced service countywide, you're going to have twenty-four or twenty-five sites. The answer to your question, based on my calculation, you're either going to need three or four more in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, with this, we have a motion. We've had discussion. It was a ten-day layover. Will be a roll call vote. Mr. Monday?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Harville?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Sneed?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hawker.
Madam Chair-
Although stay closed, you might need to come back.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'd like for each board member to refer to the handout to Mr. Monday or Mr. Hawker concerning the paved compactor sites with Devia Highway, Callahan Hill, and Sandy River.
Mr. Harville, to comply with for you, we have one for the public right there if anybody wants to follow along.
And actually, what we're doing is moving on to item number eight, and if everybody's got this in front, and Mr. Hawker's up here, then Mr. Monday, if you'll give us a brief explanation of what we're getting ready to, or was that-
Well, I think, I think everybody knows Mr. Monday has put this, put this out, or Mr. Hawker, but it's to him, and we've all been copied, and we discussed this at the last meeting, so it's, it's nothing new. But in saying that, to get these sites paid and have, have them completed, these three sites, I make a motion that we appropriate a hundred and seventy-six thousand and five hundred dollars from appropriated funds, which will require a ten-day layover to get these projects done, and I'll wait until I get a second. Now I've got another question. Second?
Second?
Madam Chair, upon, upon that, I, I really think, and this is, I guess, would go to Mr. Hawker, he had worked this up. Do you feel like, you know, probably we could come in a, a little bit under, I know contingency here, construction is fifteen thousand five hundred. Maybe hopefully we can bring this project down a little cheaper. I mean, that's, that's, the motion is to appropriate this amount.
Okay.
Let me answer that. When we done some of the sites that we do in there, I didn't have the benefit of being on the front end of the project. It was pretty much directed for me to do, and I had to come back and try to catch up. I'm not going to go down that road. This particular, uh, direction come from Mr. Monday, I've had the chance to get on the front of this project and look at the budget and calculate the numbers, and I've had a chance to check it. I've got a contingency in it, and in government, you always need a contingency, so if you have a change order and you've got to face Mr. Hagman again, you need to have something to cover it with. But you have to be honest. I cannot make money go away. It will be bid it competitively. Uh, the market sets the price, not the staff. Uh, I'm not going to say fudge, but I have the numbers of it. This project will come in lower than this. But how much lower, I do not know. When I set a budget, it's not, it's unfair in public works because projects cost so much. It's unfair for me to inflate a project because if I inflate a project, it may cause another division to lose a piece of equipment or something that they really trying to get. Countywide, be the sheriff's department or whatever. But if I underinflate it and have to come back, that can also hurt the public work staff as well as other departments. I think this is a true budget. I think this is what you're going to cost. I think you're going to come in under this.
Okay. Madam Chair, let, let me just follow up on that, and this is related to what Mr. Hawker said, because the Callahan Hill and, and the Medical Center, uh, site and everything, the project was four hundred and forty thousand, and the original price came in at three forty, and then we, of course, had to change on a fifty-four thousand. We still within the budget amount that was appropriated, but do I have to put that in my motion that anything left from this will go forward to my motion tonight? That way we could make it less.
I, I think the answer to that, Mr. Harville, would be, we are still, uh, we are still trying to close out these two projects. And you've also got one in Ms. Bowman that we're looking at. I've looked at the numbers. They're going to be pretty close. I think it's going to come in less than this. However, uh, there is provisions in the existing contract for rock and stuff that we are still negotiating and debating, so I don't want to change anything in the original three forty.
Yeah, but, but hold it. We cut this short. It's not that, I don't want anything spent that needs to be completed. What I'm saying in layman's terms, if there's any money left from this four hundred and forty thousand, it will be carried over toward the motion I made tonight.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's a problem with that.
Yeah. You said that was what I mean, Mr. Monday?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, is this ten-day layover?
Yeah, that's my question. We normally don't discuss this.
Right.
We, we're supposed to be discussing this at the next meeting.
It's a ten-day layover.
And I, and I have some grave concerns about spending this money in light of the cuts that we made in the current year's budget, and I think we need to have a finance, this could be brought back when the finance committee meets. We've got a finance committee meeting scheduled, but this is a hundred and some thousand. We can't just keep spending money willy-nilly up here when we cutting our revenue. We need to have some discussion.
All right. We did have a motion, the second, so that, since we are appropriating money, then it's a ten-day layover. So no more discussion on it. And then, are you going to just bring it up at the finance committee meeting?
Yep.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on from item eight to item nine, Pennsylvania County School Energy Project Overview.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, the school system, they are sending a request to you, and what they are needing is your consent to proceed with phase two of an energy efficiency program within our school facilities. This is good news. They're not here asking for money. The energy savings pays for the upgrades that would be required in our school facilities anyway. The project has been cleared and approved by the school board. The board of supervisors is the next step in the process. From the board of supervisors, they are asking you to approve the project and also
also authorize an agreement with the county to run this through the Virginia Resources Authority, known as VRA, an entity created by the General Assembly for Virginia localities. This, in essence, would be, uh, a bridge, basically, through the county and VRA to get a grant that you'll hear more about in a few minutes. There's no action required tonight, the goal was simply to acquaint you with the project. And in your packet, I'd like to walk you through a few important documents, uh, just so you'll know in transparency what's been provided to you. On pages forty-eight through fifty-five, there's a timeline. It shows a cash flow analysis of the project and a performance contract info from Train, who is the selected contractor to perform this work. Pages fifty-six through seventy-three is information on the Virginia Saves Program. It's a program that helps offset the project cost, it reimburses the locality for any financing cost up to a certain percentage. Pages seventy-four through ninety-eight, specifically on page seventy-six, it reflects Train as the authorized contractor through the state program that localities can utilize. Then on page ninety-nine, there's a VRA approval letter stating that the county has been approved for this transaction. And finally, on pages one oh one through four oh two, yes, uh, three hundred pages, there is a performance agreement between the Pennsylvania County School Board and Train, which states in terms, conditions, and an extensive project list, and this is FYI, in full transparency and disclosure, uh, to show the documents that the school board has to consider, and also the board of supervisors. Tonight, we have several people here with us that can answer any questions, provide additional information. We have with us Charlie Barksdale, he's with the Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy. He travels all around the state and talks about these programs, and just reassures the locality that he has, uh, went through a process with the school division, vetted the project to make sure it's legitimate, the cost savings can be realized. I've worked with Mr. Barksdale on three of these projects, he's a very good resource, is here to represent you as well. Also, we have Mike Hudson with the school division, and we have two representatives from Train, who again is the chosen contractor. And again, before I open it up for any questions that you may have from our distinguished guests here this evening, again, no action is required this evening, this is to acquaint you with a project, show you the documentation, and how, uh, this is, um, backed up basically by a contract that's very specific about the scope of work. And then, at the next board meeting, if you so desire, we will bring you back a resolution that sets everything in process so the county can actually continue working for financing with the school board, and also in all the arrangements that we have to do with the VRA. Mr. Hunt has reviewed all these pages for you, and he may have some comment, or you may have some questions for him.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. Okay, that's a question discussion.
Madam Chair, I didn't-
All right, hold on. Yeah, Mr.-
Okay, I would just like, Madam Chair, I'd like to know if Mr. Hunt has any-
That was my same question.
Okay.
I, I have reviewed this, it is over three hundred pages long, more importantly, the school's attorney has, uh, reviewed this and blessed it. We've had multiple, uh, teleconferences on it, there's no action tonight, but, um, this is a positive development, and, um, although there might be a few adjustments, we're fairly confident this contract is, is okay. But it is, it, it's so long because it details what, um, what services they're gonna provide to each of the schools, that's what the line share of this. But this is authorized by the Virginia Code, it has been utilized successfully all over the state, and, um, there are guarantees that this will be paid through the energy savings, and if not, Train will put the bill for any differences. Theoretically, there will be no local money attached to this.
Mr. Blackstock?
I'm familiar with these type of programs, and I think it's important that we point out to the citizens that are here tonight, and also citizens of Maine, uh, view us on our new webcam system. The savings and the energy will pay, will put the bill for this, is it correct? Somebody's paying y'all big money, give me some answers.
Yes.
Correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay. And one of the benefits to Pennsylvania County, uh, school system and, and to our citizens is, the middle schools are getting some age on them, and a lot of the, uh, uh, systems that we're using, including the lights and HVAC and so forth, are aging in parts and so forth, are becoming harder and harder to, to get, correct? And probably a lot of it needs to be replaced.
Do you mind if we get a representative from Train to come forward, please? And Mr. Hudson, you might wanna be ready, just in case they have a question for you.
I'm Kathy Cox with Train Energy Services.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I, I just think it's important that the citizens understand, we're signing, when we're signing on to something like this, that they understand what, what we're doing. But basically, we're using, we're, we're doing, we have energy efficiency, we're gonna pay the bills by utilizing that efficiency, and because of the systems that are currently in use in the middle schools, they're aging and they need to be replaced, and we're basically replacing a lot of those systems cost-free. Is that correct, Mr. Hudson?
Correct. The, um, control systems at three of the middle schools are outdated, you can no longer buy parts for the HVAC control, building control systems, that's one of the big projects, and then also the boiler at Twin Springs had a, um, pretty major leak, you can no longer buy parts for that boiler, so we're gonna replace that boiler.
Utilizing this program.
Using this program, also, and the same savings out of this program to replace those two big major projects, and then we'll replace a lot of lighting, all the lighting that they're putting in has a ten-year, um, bulb warranty on the lights, so they're, they're replacing all the bulbs for ten years, if we have any questions, and it's much less energy use on the lighting, so the, the lighting and the controls upgrades are doing will pay for the project, with the energy savings.
Well, when we doing something right, let's talk about it, we talk about a lot of bad things we do, let's, let's toot the horn a little bit, y'all doing something right. Thanks.
And, and we do, we did pre-measurement, um, on the energy efficiency side, and the, um, the measurement and verification part, which we have to do every single year to prove that we are saving the energy, we said we would, we do a pre-measurement, and then we do a post-measurement. So each year, we will come back and say, "This is the amount of energy you save through this program, this is what we guaranteed you would save," and, and you'll see the difference. Uh, the first performance contract we did, um, the first two years, uh, we were about twenty-eight thousand over the guaranteed amount. So we do have in a factored, um, conservative rate, um, Train's very conservative, um, so we do expect not only to, to meet the guarantee year after year, but have a little bit of room in there, so. It's, it's a great project, we're addressing a chiller also, LED lighting, new technology, some exterior lighting, um, and with the Virginia Saves Program, uh, the effective interest rate is, is well below one percent. So it's, um, it's a great project, I'd like to promote it, have permission to, to talk about it with other school boards and, and, um, board of supervisors, so.
Thank you, I think, Mr. Harville-
Um, oh, I'm ready to go, I'm ready for the resolution if you had it tonight, I'm, I'm ready to go, but I mean, I agree, um, you know, today's technology, and it is so much, as Mr. Hudson has said, it's in his schools, you can't get parts. I give you example, it ain't schools, it's everywhere you go. I was at Duke Winston, and, and the doctor told me the, the equipment they used to run the test on me, "When you come back next week, all that will be gone because we can't buy parts, it's gonna be all new." So this, this is modern technology, saving money, and I'm ready to go.
Mr. Hagerman?
I really, uh, I, I really like figuring money, uh, I like figuring it for the, for our citizens, but, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be picky, but I, I really, going to, going to cross the fingers that, that, uh, somebody, I guess it was you all, or perhaps, uh, maybe our county people, considering the cost, that this, that this is supposed to cost, three million, one hundred and thirty-six, uh, dollars, well, one hundred and thirty-six, then seven hundred and fifteen dollars over a fifteen-year period, uh, that amount still is, uh, but we, and we still owe for new schools, our new, new school systems. So that's a potential savings of one point seven million dollars. But then we, if we turn right around and over that, we would still owe, after, after we saved that, uh, one point seven million, we would still owe one million, four hundred and thirty-six hundred dollars and seven, uh, seven, seven hundred and point five, actually. So I hope I made a mistake, uh, if I, if I did, uh, are we still owing after fifteen years another million, I, almost two million dollars?
No, sir. Um, the actual annual savings is well over two hundred and sixty-one thousand for the first year, and it goes up after that. Um, for a project, an ESCO project, an energy services, uh, project to be done in, in Virginia, you have to have either cash flow neutral or cash flow positive, so that year after year, the energy savings pays for it, and at the life of the fifteen years, it is zero. So at the end, you actually have, um, cash flow positive, um, flow from, from the first year. So the project is paid off in fifteen years, and I believe the total amount of savings is around four point six million.
Over a fifteen-year period?
Yes, sir.
Have, have you checked that out, to make sure that's positive, uh, that the savings is for a minimum?
Mr. Barksdale? You may could answer that question. Uh, they do provide a, a cash flow analysis that, that I think you will refer into from the board packet, but, uh, another key piece is the measurement and verification process that Ms. Cox outlined, that's the most important part of the process, the company guarantees those energy savings, and if they're not met, they have to write a check and, uh, cover that gap. And, uh, basically, what they're saying is, if you take the cost of the debt, you subtract out the energy savings, you save more than the cost spread over the fifteen years.
That's great. And not only, uh, by code of Virginia, the ESCO, Train has to give you a yearly bond under the savings as well, it's not just a guarantee that you get a bond as well.
A performance and payment bond, year after year, yes, sir.
Okay, sounds great.
The bottom line is, there's a performance bond in place to protect us legally.
Yes.
And it's, uh, not gonna cost the county a penny.
Correct, it's positive cash flow, yes, sir.
When you say positive cash flow, you telling me we might make a little money?
I won't say that.
Look me in the eye and tell me.
No, sir, the, the projected savings is positive cash flow, yes, sir, with the Virginia Saves Program and the interest rates, yes, sir.
Thank you all.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, thank y'all very much for being here, and there's no, uh, action to be taken tonight. That's correct. Item ten, appointments, and Mr. Harville has the-
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Ronald, Ron McMahon, uh, from the West Upper District to the Pennsylvania County Industrial Development Authority for a four-year term.
Second.
Discussion? All right, ready for the vote?
Uh, Madam Chair, I would, I matter for the record, this would be a reappointment for a four-year term beginning December the first of twenty fifteen through November the thirtieth of twenty nineteen.
Good choice. All right, all in favor of the appointment, raise your right hand. All right, board announcements, starting in there with you, Mr. Hagerman? Mr. Harville?
Uh, get out and vote, good luck to everybody running.
Mr. Barber?
Good luck to everybody.
Good luck to everybody running.
I'd say the same thing, too, and, um, also wanted to mention that the youth commission was out very active and busy this weekend, they did a cleanup in Chatham Saturday morning, and then participated in the sheriff's trampet tree Saturday night at Chatham Middle School. And board, most of the board will be in, uh, at Baco at the conference this weekend, so, uh, safe travels for everyone. Any reports here, Mr. Monday, Mr.-
No, I-
And the family motion.
Make a motion, Jerry.
Second.